I hereby call to order this meeting of the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, December twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is eleven A M. Would those commissioners under our attendance please identify themselves and state as to whether they're here via telephone or Google meets or in person?
This is Aaron Feinstein. I'm here via Google meets.
This is Joe Pennington. I'm participating by Google meets and telephone. I'm sorry, I had it muted.
No worries. Thank you both. I am Scott Fletcher and I am participating via telephone. Item B is our new business. B one is pursuant to A R S sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, the renewal license application, submitted by Mr. Scott Coker doing business as Bellator Sports Worldwide L L C for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Coker's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So everything with this application checks out. They do present a stable financial position, and I do recommend their approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, thoughts, questions regarding Bellator's decision to come back and see us again?
Mr. Chairman, I just greatly appreciate Bellator's interest in Arizona, and I think that we'll be able to put on some very good events for them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Feinstein, any thoughts?
No, just I would just echo that sentiment and excited to have Bellator back in the state, given the success of the past shows.
Agreed. The current heavyweight champion of Bellator happens to be a local fella. I know he's fighting out of state, I think, February fourth, but perhaps after that, we can put something together on his behalf. But it's always encouraging to have Bellator back out. They do a great job, and we're excited about this application. The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to A R S five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, I move that we approve the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Scott Coker doing business as Bellator Sports Worldwide for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Coker, Bellator. We look forward to seeing you soon. Item B two is pursuant to A R S sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Edward Suarez doing business as Legacy Fighting Alliance, L F A, L L C, for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to L F A's application, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. L F A again presents a very stable financial position. All of their application items checked out, and they are in a good position. I do recommend their approval.
Thank you. Mr. Vella. Commissioners, thoughts, questions regarding this application?
Mr. Chairman, again, I'm just appreciative of L F A coming back to Arizona. They do a very good promotion, a very good job, and I look forward to hopefully being able to attend some of their events.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Feinstein?
No questions for me. I've attended several of these events and always a great show.
Great. Agreed. L F A has done some some really exciting shows in Arizona, and we look forward to more. The chair would be open to motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that pursuant to A R S five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, A, B, E, and five dash two two nine, that we approve a renewal license application for Scott Edward Suarez doing business as Legacy Fighting Alliance, L F A, L L C, for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries three to zero. Looking forward to what L F A has planned this year. B three is also pursuant to A R S sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Christopher Carriasso doing business as Rise Combat Sports L L C for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to this application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carriasso submitted everything on time. All of his documents came back and checked out. It looks as though they are in a stable financial position, and all I could say is that in working with them, the last couple of events, Rise very good job, and they are usually very diligent, so I do recommend approval for renewal.
Thank you. Mr. Vella, I was going to ask what our experiences look like going back, but I heard great things about Rise. I'm glad that they have plans to continue on. Commissioners, what thoughts might you have regarding this?
No questions for me, Mr. Chairman.
No, no questions for me either, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'm just glad we're back. It's nice to have a group like this on board, doing things the right way, and the chair be open to motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to A R S five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, A, B, and E, five dash two two nine, I propose that we approve the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Christopher Carriasso at Rise Combat Sports L L C for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries three to zero. Item B four is pursuant to A R S sections five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Harrison Rogers doing business as United Fight League for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Rogers' application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So I will point out that they have changed their official name. This was Freedom Fight League. I'm sorry, Freedom Fight Night, and is now United Fight League. But working with this promotion was a pleasure last year. They they continue to improve at each event, and I do look forward to working with them again. Their their financial position is stable, and I will say that I do recommend their approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, questions regarding United Fight League?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
Thank you.
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Vella, if I may, can you speak to the last event? It seems like there is a lot of shuffling late in the game as far as who is fighting who. Is that correct?
So, Mr. Chairman, although it's been a while since that last event, I will say that, you know, I believe that may have been the case. I'm trying to recall, but but Pia has her hand up, so I'll let her speak. She's she's on here on behalf of the promotion.
Hi, we just had like six guys get injured the week of Fight Week, so there was a lot of shuffling to re-match up the card.
Okay, and that that was my assumption, and I know it never goes perfectly, does it? I just it seemed like a lot of motion going on, and that that tends to concern us when it comes to matchmaking and the like, too, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If it gives you any reassurance, I'm almost finished with my February and June card, so.
Wow, look at you go. You've got June all sorted?
Yeah, and most of December.
Well, very good. Well, we're I think excited to have you back and look forward to what you're going to do. With that said, is there a motion by chance?
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to A R S five dash two two seven, five dash two two eight, A, B, and E, and five dash two two nine, that we approve a renewal license application for Mr. Harrison Rogers doing business as United Fight League for a two thousand twenty-three promoter's license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations. We look forward to February and June, and what comes thereafter as well. Item B five is pursuant to A R S sections five dash two two four F, the Arizona Boxing and M M A Commission and Gila River Indian Community Intergovernmental Agreement, first renewal. This is great news, Mr. Vella. Will you speak to it, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you. Very great news. I look forward to working with this African community and hopefully having several events there on the land. But I would like to recommend, sir, that we go into executive session, that way there we could speak with Yancey, just so he could clear up questions you may have.
Okay, very good. Let's let's do that. Do we have a room we need to clear, Mr. Vella?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, could we go ahead and finish with the concussion protocol so that we don't have to come back and deal with that? Just go ahead and deal with it now and then go into executive session?
Sure, we can table B five for now and revisit it later. Why don't we do that? I'm going to ask that we table B five, and we head into our information reports, and then we'll circle back to it at the back end of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
C one is our two thousand twenty-three commission meeting schedule. Mr. Vella?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So I included that in the packet there for you all, and if there's any issue, I know, I believe you and I spoke about May seventeenth date, due to which we'll reschedule that. But if you are all good with this, I will go ahead and post it onto our website. But if any commissioners have any issues with any of those dates, just please let me know so that we can make adjustments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, make sure you communicate with Mr. Vella. Any of those dates don't look good. May seventeenth, as I told you, Mr. Vella, I can't do, the week prior of work, or the other two can handle it on their own. You figure it out.
Yes, sir.
We're willing to just go ahead and assume that the tenth of May?
Yes.
It works for me.
If that works for everybody, I could fill in the tenth of May.
Commissioner Feinstein, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm sure we can all be able to work around that.
Thank you all. I appreciate you being accommodating in that regard. May tenth, it looks like, but please, if you get a chance, go through that schedule and see if there's any conflicts you might see ahead of things. Let's push to C two, our concussion protocols. Mr. Vella?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So I did do some research on this matter, but I don't have much to circle back on yet because of the holidays. Some of the individuals that I spoke with were delayed in their responses as far as various different organizations and protocols that there are. We did speak about it a little bit as far as budgeting and what type of costs would be associated with that. And so obviously now we we don't have the budget to to eat the cost as an agency, but that's something that we are working on, that I'll continue to report on our concussion protocol as as I obviously do more research and as we have more revelations as far as the budget goes and how we want to go forward forward with implementing those protocols.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I was I was able to talk to Dr. Oda as well as a couple of the promoters at the last events, and I do think that there's a way forward here. I think if we can particularly use widely available tests like IMPACT, which is national or similar, where fighters could potentially get that test either either at the either at home base or in the state, the test is affordable, so theoretically the commission could buy a subscription to a test like that where we get all fighters for a flat fee, which would be imminently affordable. But I think the key thing that key feedback I got from the promoters is that as we work on this, that we we would definitely have to be able to allow our medical teams to make exceptions for participants that for logistical reasons could not obtain the test prior to the fight. You know, based on medical exam and considering other factors, I would defer to our medical teams on that, but I think some kind of standardized testing with the with the ability for the medical team to make exceptions if the fighters are unable to get the test done, I think that's probably a reasonable way forward. That sort of meets in the middle.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pennington, your thoughts, please?
Mr. Chairman, I've Mr. Chairman, we have dealt with this for quite some time, and I know that once we work our way through the whole process, that we will have something good that we can use here in Arizona. So I just continue to support Commissioner Feinstein's efforts as well as Dr. Oda's, and look forward to us resolving this hopefully in early next year.
Thank you. Agreed. Mr. Vell, let's definitely leave this on the agenda. Let's continue to learn what we can about what others are doing and how they're going about it. IMPACT is a test that I'm familiar with. I've taken a couple of times. It feels to me like it's something that fighters could potentially take at weigh-ins, for example, or something else.
It's fine.
As I recall, it was about a fifteen-minute session, something like that.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll be up here in a few minutes.
Something we should take a look at, Mr. Vell. I'm not saying that's the only thing, but it is. As Commissioner Feinstein said, it's readily available here and in Brazil and in Germany all at the same time in various languages. So it's been made to be transportable, and I think it might work in our favor. But more to come, and let's continue to talk about this. I would love to sort something out firmly in the next few months if we can. But thank you all for pursuing that. Mr. Vella, how do you want to handle this? You want to go back to B five, or do you want to do call of the public and commission first?
I'd say let's go back to the agenda items, sir, and then we could get that out of the way.
Okay, very good. Folks, we are going to head into executive session. We'll have to clear the room, clear the phones, and et cetera. Mr. Vella, how shall we proceed?
Just click into the other link. Sorry, I invited you to the executive session link. So if, yeah, if all the commissioners just hop over into that room, we should be fine.
Okay, there is email sent out with phone numbers and the like to call into that, so in your email there will be verbiage to that effect. Okay, good. I will see you shortly then.
Mr. Chairman, I do believe everyone is back in the call.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Let's kick things back off. We are back in the regular meeting. We have completed items A, B, and C, and are moving on to D, which is our call to the public. Those members wishing to address the commission must attend via video conference or phone, and must be recognized by the chair. Mr. Vella, do we have anyone who'd like to talk with us?
Mr. Feinstein, I'd like to take us back to that agenda item under new business five, to hold a vote. to hold a vote to that IGA, sir.
Oh, I appreciate you saying so. Yes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-224F. Am I echoing here? I guess I am. Anyway, pursuant to ARS 5-224F, that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Gila River Indian Community and authorize the executive director to sign the document.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. This is a great thing. Mr. Vella, you are authorized. Please do so. Now, can we move to item D? Call to the public? Mr. Vella, is anyone here who'd like to chat with us?
Mr. Chairman, I do not currently see any hands raised, so I'm going to assume no.
Okay, fair enough. Then let's press on to E, the call to the commission, which allows commission members or the executive director to introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. Mr. Vella, anything you'd like to talk about here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There are a couple of items that I did not include in our information reports. One being that we have two events coming up in the next month or so. I approved an event for LFA on January 6, 2023, at the Wild Horse Pass Casino. And I also approved an event for Top Rank Boxing Promotions on February 3, 2023, at the Desert Diamond Arena in Glendale. I also would like to share with everyone that we do have a new staff member sitting right beside me here, Iraña Felix, our boxing and MMA assistant. So, Iraña, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Iraña Felix. Yeah.
And, sir, beyond that, nothing else to share. I look forward to 2023, and I think it's gonna be a great year.
It's gonna be a full one, and we need all hands on deck. Ms. Felix, welcome. It's great to have you aboard. I think you're gonna enjoy it, and it's gonna be a great year. Your timing's very good. One other thing, if I may, Mr. Vella, we're talking about events and calendars and the like. Maybe not, I'm not good at this, or maybe I'm not getting the right information. But a solid calendar would be really helpful. Or just as far as, I think myself and the other commissioners have difficulty scheduling things out. When things are approved, is it, you tell me, is it possible to get an email? Or can we update the online calendar more quickly? Is there some way just to get word to us when events are, I guess, is my point?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I don't mind sending out. I could certainly send you an email when things are approved. As far as the online calendar goes, as you know, last year, you know, for most of the year, we were very good at keeping the calendar up to date. This year, obviously, nothing has been posted onto the calendar because we were waiting for the renewals for the promoters and then also for the, you know, the formal event requests and fees and everything to be paid. But now that those have cleared, those events will be posted, as was all the commission meetings. So you have my word that I'd certainly send you an email, and I will keep the online calendar up to date as we did last year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vella. I hate to find more work for you. I know how busy you all are, but it is very helpful. Commissioners, do you have any thoughts about the calendar and how best to keep us in touch?
Yeah, I mean, I would just echo that sentiment. I think even going back to my days as a retired position, the further ahead I know there's gonna be an event, then I can block off those nights. And so maybe, Mr. Vella, when you approve these events, if you could send out even just a calendar invite, just like you do for this meeting, so that I just, you know, all, you know, especially, you know, the timekeepers and referees and everybody. If the email goes out to everybody, people just know there's an event on that night and might make people more available with the calendar, you know, that calendar invite so they can block the time off.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I will. I'll send, I'll include you in our calendar invites as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioner Pennington, any thoughts about the calendar? There being none, let's press on. Commissioner Feinstein, anything you'd like to talk about during the call to the commission?
No, nothing from me.
Okay. And Commissioner Pennington, are you with us?
Nothing from me either, Mr. Chairman. I am, yes. I just muted myself.
No worries.
My comment was a joke and facetious. I was just gonna ask Mr. Vella not to schedule. I'm gonna send him my ski calendar and ask him not to schedule events while I'm up in Utah skiing. That's a joke, but.
Yeah, that's gonna be a tough one to pull off. Well, it sounds like you have about 15 feet of snow up there, too. You might still be skiing in May.
Yeah, they were digging cars out after a six-foot snowstorm. It was just incredible.
Oh, Lord. Well, good for you. It sounds like a good, good, solid season is afoot. Mr. Vella, anything else we need to talk about during the call to the commission?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. But if it would be helpful, I'd also send out our preliminary kind of projected calendar for 2023. I'm not sure if I've sent that to you all, but that one is not necessarily approved events, but events that promoters have fixed interest in the dates for. So I could send that to you as well. That way there you can kind of cast the year. Most of the time, those events, those dates, rather, are the dates that they stick with, so.
That would be fantastic, I think. It's, as Commissioner Feinstein said, the earliest we hear about it, the better chance we have of carving out time and making sure we're there. So if you would, please, that would be great. Item F is an announcement. The announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, January 18, 2023, and is subject to change based on a quorum. And item G is adjournment. Is there a motion for such? And prior, I'd like to thank everyone for a great year. Mr. Vella has stepped in and done great things for us, and it looks like we have another great year going forward. But thank you all for a great '22, and '23 is gonna be equal, if not better. It's gonna be a great one. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I move we adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to thank everyone for a great year and looking forward to next year, and I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three to zero. We are officially adjourned. Thank you all. Have a safe and happy new year, and we will get back together here shortly. Take care, everyone.